Is not going to be here today, so the clerk takes over for the supervisor to moderate until the board votes to have somebody else. So I'll call the meeting to order and then we can do that stuff.
Okay.
I'll call the regular meeting of the Holly Township Board of Trustees to order. May we have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Sorry. George Collis, Karen Winchester, here. Jennifer Ryan?
Here.
Derek Burton?
Here.
Ryan Matson?
Here.
Mike McCanny?
Here.
Richard Kinnaman?
Here.
I would make a motion to excuse George.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Next, we have agenda approval. Oh, no, we're not going to do agenda approval. Next is, we need to approve a meeting moderator. And Brian, you were really good at planning commissions, so I was wondering if maybe you wanted to or somebody else wanna?
I am fine to moderate the meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Support.
Doing okay.
Okay, so moved. All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll stay right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't need to go so far as to change my name to George for the night. Up next is agenda approval. Anything to amend on the agenda this evening?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
We have motion by Winchester, support by Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Not opposed. Next, we move on to our consent agenda. Any corrections or amendments to the consent agenda?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Winchester, support by Kinnaman, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need a roll call for that.
I'm sorry, roll call. It's been, it's been a year or so.
Yes, I know.
You're fired.
Have those financial things at the planning commission.
Yep, absolutely. Roll call vote, please.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Jennifer Ryan?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Ryan Matson?
Yes.
Michael McCanny?
Yes.
Richard Kinnaman?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us down to, let's see, that was a little backward. Brings us down to our public hearings. We do not have a public hearing. Next, we have our presentation by BSNA for the software upgrade to BSNA Cloud.
Ooh, he has a lavalier. We have a lavalier mic now.
Yeah, oh yeah, cooking with kerosene. Thank you so much for inviting us up here and for allowing us to present to you today. The Classic Car Show was also a nice touch, so.
Yeah, the people watching online won't be able to hear you if you're not at this mic. I don't know if you'll have any?
He should be dialed in with the lavalier. Is he dialed in with the lavalier? Yeah. You just have to bring it up a little bit.
Okay.
We have a little trouble hearing you.
If you could just stand a little closer so the folks here could hear you.
Oh sure, absolutely, absolutely. So basically what we're going to do is present to you today the upgrade from the .net solution, which is the current on-premise solution that the township has and working through for the ERP system to a cloud solution. We're going to discuss some of the benefits involved with this cloud solution and the value that it'll bring into the township as a whole. Okay, so basically, just as a brief discussion of the evolution of the product from the time that BSNA first came about, we went from a DAW system to pervasive to .net. .net is what you're currently on, so that is a 16-year-old system that you're currently working from. It is an on-premise solution, so that means it's in-house and everything that comes from it, it comes from servers and things like that that are kept locally. And what we're going to be proposing is our cloud solution. Cloud solution is a web-based system that is, works off of Azure, which is Microsoft Azure system. And so this way it makes it, you have the ability to work outside of this location. You're not stuck being here as well as various different value adds that comes with being a cloud system, which we'll be going through. So as I had mentioned, what you have today is a .net desktop system and we are recommending moving to a cloud-based system. And just to kind of go through some of the different things of when you say, well, what is cloud, right? So cloud is, like I said, is a web-based system, so all of the things that come with the current on-premise solution that includes all of the costs for any kind of IT support, which includes managing it, doing any kind of monthly upgrades, maintaining the servers, replacing the servers as they go old and need to be replaced, cost of licensing for any kind of, like SQL licensing and things like that to come along with the servers as well. And then any kind of cybersecurity that you would want to add to those current on-premise servers. So with the cloud solution though, these are things that BSNA largely takes on. So a lot of the IT-type support, like I was mentioning, the, all those monthly upgrades that take place, the cybersecurity, the different layers of cybersecurity that are involved in that, so two-factor authentication, so that's like ID verification and things that you would experience with online banking, very similar to that. We have the ability to, they're going to be monitoring that security as well, as well as any kind of disaster recovery. So should something unfortunate happen to a server, which is an on-premise mechanical type of technology, the cloud-based system doesn't work off the same thing. It works off of two geoplan, geo redundant stations, one in Virginia, one in Arizona. So if something should unfortunately hap, unfortunate happen, you don't have to worry about that database backup. Currently, your database backup is however often the township does it. So that is something that is now monitored and handled by BSNA through the cloud system. So that's done daily, so anything that should happen, we will be able to back up and replace that database with whatever was occurring that day. You're not having to say, oh my gosh, we haven't backed up in 30 days, let's say. Well, now that's as far back as we can go. This is something that's done on a regular basis in the cloud system. As well as, it's a centralized database, so currently you have a series of modules. And when you're going through all of these different modules, you're having to kind of break away from what you're doing and go over to the next one. By having a centralized database, everything is in one place. So as a staff member is searching and working through it, everything that they can see or have permissions, security permissions to see, will be in one place as opposed to having to kind of move around through the system. So that includes, includes, I'm sorry, I should say improves productivity. So the workflow becomes a lot more seamless that way, including any kind of enhancements or anything like that that is done to the system. Currently, there are no more enhancements per se being done to .net just because of the age of the technology. But in cloud, there are regular annual enhancements that we're currently making to the system itself and that comes with just by virtue of you having the cloud system. So by having this new technology, any kind of enhancements or improvements that we make will just come along with it. And there are a handful that we're currently working on, including just things to help automate with workflow and things like that as well as any kind of questions that, and assistance and things like that that the staff members may come across. You know, I only do this act, action like once or twice a year. I don't remember how to do it. I have to contact support and I have to try to wait for support to get back to me on a question that I can just find in an automated system, just by asking it and they can pull up different tutorials and kind of help you direct around the system, like more like self-serving type of a thing. And now we're going to move on to the evolution of our service. I'll pass it over to Keegan.
Any, do we want to hold questions until the end or do you want to go through anything technical related to the, to the cloud platform that we can answer? Or from the crowd? Okay. Well, quick intro on myself. My name is Keegan. I've been with BSNA a little over 11 years now. I know it doesn't look like it, but that is the truth. I'm also local. I live in Fenton. So I grew up over in Livingston County in the Howell area, so my family and I sometimes pop over to Holly. I wish I would have brought my boy tonight. He's a year and a half and he loves cars and trucks. I could have let him crawl around here for a little bit before we went out. Checked out some of the cars. He would have, he would have loved that, so. So my piece is just to talk about the evolution of the company and the support that we've offered. So a lot of you guys know, we've been in business for over 30 years servicing municipalities in the state of Michigan. But things change a lot over time, right? It's not just new platforms. It's a lot of new people that you hire. It's new ways that you support your customers and implement your systems and things like that. And since we're on the heels of an election year, right, we notice a lot of new treasures have come in and a lot of new clerks have come in and a lot of times BSNA is responsible for helping them out, right? We do what we can and so we've actually, a couple of quick stats, we've received over 100,000 support. I'm sorry, the number of support cases we received in 2024 was about 100,000. So far, we've been averaging 12,000 a month in 2025. A lot of that is due to supporting two platforms, right? We have supporting the .net platform, also supporting the cloud platform and then also new elected officials who call us, you know, for help and assistance and things like that, so. Growing very rapidly. Our response times, you may have noticed they've gone up just a little bit because of the caseload that we've taken. If you're an end user, they've gone up a little bit, but we're keeping an eye on that and we're keeping that as low as we possibly can. Our average first response time is about 1.2 hours right now. Industry average compared to eight other vendors that we evaluated based on SLAs and things like that averaged about eight, eight hours. So we're still doing pretty well. It's not the eight minutes that it used to be when we only had a handful of customers in the state. So it's gone up, but we're definitely doing a good job keeping an eye on that. Some of the things that we've done to kind of offset the slightly longer response times that some of our customers have seen is giving you different options to be supported by BSNA, right? So one of those options is the customer portal, so that's something that is brand new to BSNA. It's not exclusive to cloud. This is just a different way that we're supporting our customers. You're able to log in and view your support cases yourself and see where they're at. So if something got referred to development and you're not sure when it's going to be completed or what they're working on, you actually can see status updates on that. That's important for the end users. That's, that product is in beta right now, but we can sign up anybody for it. Doesn't look the prettiest because it is in beta, but it's getting there and it's, we've got maybe 200 or so customers that are signed up for it now. We're also releasing, well, we have released in-app guidance. That's something that Joel alluded to earlier. Those processes that you may only do once a year, like restore a database or bring your tax roll down, right, from the county or maybe you print your W2s out of payroll. We have in-app guidance that helps you to, basically walks you through it. Tells you, click here to do this, click here to do this. This is what these settings do. So it's much easier for you to go through that process on your own without needing to put in a support ticket, so. Those are some things that we're doing to kind of cut down on the number of tickets that you have to submit, right, because you get more access yourself. Another one is the AI chatbot. AI is a very scary word to some of us. It's kind of scary to me too, actually. But that's actually an AI bot that we're training. It's being trained by our support staff, by our trainers and they're teaching this bot the BSNA language, right? What, what does it mean to be a clerk? What does it mean to be a treasurer? What do they do? What, what matters to them? How do they talk, right? If you, if you, you need to know what the chart of accounts means, basically, right? And what that, what that string indicates. And so we're training these, our chatbot to support you in the way that, in your language effectively, right? And that's been very cool to see that improve and get better and there's more things that we're going to be leveraging with AI over the next few years. But that's another thing. It's not, it's not exclusive to, to cloud or to, or to .net. That's just a BSNA service that we're, you know, we're innovating on. And then another one would be more webinars and user group meetings, so we, we received some feedback from our customers that, hey, we need more training options. And so we went through and we released tons of webinars in 2025 that are free to all of our customers. We do not charge for things like that because we want you to be supported and we know that you'll end up with a better experience that way and again, reduce the number of support tickets that you're putting in. These are all things that we're doing to help cut down on that response time, so more self-service. A lot of customers have asked about that. So again, I mentioned it's not super pretty. That is a screenshot of the customer community. The other element to that is not only can you view your own support tickets, but you also will have the ability to communicate with other townships. So a lot of you in Oakland County are kind of in a similar boat, right? Like Tax and Assessing is hosted by the, by the county. We're bringing that in-house. What does that mean? You probably want to talk to other communities who have, who have done that, right? Independence Charter Township, maybe. Some other, other places that are, are going to be going through that or maybe they've recently gone through that. So there's going to be a more, a social element to that too, so you can, outside of listservs and whatnot, you can, you can get help from, from other folks too. I should point it that way, so it goes a little bit quicker. That's a screenshot of our knowledge base that is actually skipping on me. So in it, let me go back one. In addition to the ability to review all of your cases, we're publishing tons of documentation and videos to our knowledge base that will teach users how to do different tasks and things like that. So you don't have to contact another community for, you know, the formal, how do I do this with BSNA? This is something that our IT support may have developed or our implementation team may have developed. I can't tell you how many of these I've created myself over the years for customers and we're putting it all out there for everybody to consume. We talked briefly about in-app guidance. This is an image of the AI chatbot and how that works. I asked it, you know, how do I add a permit? And it's actually walking me through those steps. Now, in, in cloud, it's pretty cool because that AI agent is actually built right into the browser, so you don't have to, you don't have to go anywhere else. But that's accessible right then and there, so if you need to ask it a question, you just click on it like you with a ChatGPT icon on your, on your computer, right? And it'll launch you right into that. I mentioned the webinars as well and user groups. We're going to continue to build those out. There's, we're, we're starting to schedule out into Q1 of 2026, but that's going to get built out more as we, as we get a little bit closer. Couple of differences between .net and cloud, because I'm sure there are some in the room that may have never seen it before, but just some comparisons for you. So this is our old .net platform. That's what you're, what the township is currently using. This is the receipt entry screen. As you can tell, it's very colorful and vibrant and it looks like it was from the 24th century. But that's the receipt entry screen. This is what that receipt entry screen looks like in cloud. So instead of gray and all of that white space, that's actually somewhat, somewhat useless. We actually packed more on one screen, so all of the fields here are effectively the same. We've added some cool new features like the ability to email receipts. That's something that treasurers have asked us for a very long time and we just never put it in .net because we were developing in cloud, right? We were like, just hang on, it's coming, it's coming. It's just going to be in the newer version. But the process is relatively the same. You're still entering your, your received of names, your tender items, your receipt item codes and things like that. That setup is very, very similar. Clicking save, moving on, printing the receipt, right? Another one, I don't think you use utility billing, but just a quick, quick example. That's the utility billing cycle manager in .net and that's the utility billing cycle manager in cloud. So it's, it's the same steps, right? It's the same general logic there and it's the same with payroll. If I had a payroll screenshot, I'd show you because I know you use our payroll program, but that payroll wizard, if you're used to going through those nine steps on that screen, it's the same steps in the cloud platform. So that learning curve shouldn't be like what it was when you initially migrated from a third party to, to our platform. Then the last one that we'll touch on is the parcel view. This is more important for treasurers. You can see that there's the application views on the light, on the right. You, you know this, Jenny, I'm sure, like by the, with the back of your hand, like the back of your hand, right? This is nothing, this is nothing new to you. But there's the summer, winter and village taxes that are all in separate tabs. This is what it looks like in cloud. A little bit hard to read just with the, the white on the screen there. But basically, instead of having summer and winter broken out into different tabs, it's all on one screen, so. So that's a small thing that we, that we changed. We did get some initial feedback when we were going through the beta process with cloud years ago, like four or five years ago. Hey, we need to, we need to change this. We want to make a couple, make a couple of tweaks and make it a little bit easier to use. And what we were able to do is trim down the number of tabs that we actually have on the screen. So we've gotten some very actionable feedback from customers and when it's specific, we can action on it and we can make things quite a bit better. It's very easy to change the view layouts on the platform. We can drag and drop any, just about any field to just about any location within reason. So even if you wanted to do things like that yourself, you have the flexibility to do that, so. Couple of other things that are more global differences between the platforms, so number one is dashboards. Joel mentioned that the, in, in .net, you have different modules and each module has its own database. For tax, you have multiple databases for each of your tax years. Makes it very difficult sometimes to know where am I, where do I need to go? What data am I trying to pull, right? But in cloud, it's all combined into a single database. You still have separate roles, tax roles, that you can, that will be segmented out. But on the backend, it's all still the same database. So what that allows us to do is we can combine more pieces of data on one screen, so that's where the dashboards come into play. If you wanted to look at accounts payable data alongside tax data, alongside receiving data, alongside payroll data, you certainly can do that, right? And that can be displayed in charts and graphs if you want, or just standard list view reports. So that's something we could never do in .net because the databases were all segmented and separated, so this is, this is huge. It's huge for auditors too. We've set up things like auditor dashboards, so that way they log in and they look, hey, this is, this is, these are the things I need to see. Bank reconciliations and things like that. We've set some up for, you know, township board meetings and city council meetings and things like that too because you guys probably are only concerned about, you know, certain pieces of data, right? Like let's show what's relevant. Let's show what actually matters. Couple of other things are, there's a central person record, so centralized addressing is new to cloud. Instead of that being separate and building versus assessing versus tax. And then a big one is the quick tax disbursements is integrated with accounts payable. So today, you probably run your quick tax disbursement report and then you go over to accounts payable and input your check. In cloud, you actually just send a check request over to AP. It automatically calculates the amounts that you need to distribute to your entities and then you print the check from there. So that was another thing, along with emailing receipts, that customers had asked us about that for many, many years. We could never do it. We did, we were able to do it here in this architecture, so. So those are some of the key differences. We have just over 600 customers that are either live on cloud or in progress. That represents about 25 or 27% or so of our entire customer base, so it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good progress that we've made over the last four years as more customers have adopted it. And we've only seen that rate increase as, as more jump on it, as, as more go, you know, more, more follow in a way, right? So. Implementation timeline, so from the time of executing a contract, there's project planning and then customer outreach. So we'll present a schedule to you that works, right? You get to sign off on it and say, yep, this is a good time for me to go. This is a bad time for me to go. Everybody wants to go live in April and May, to be totally honest, or October and November. Nobody wants to go live in March. I wonder why? So spring of 2026 is already super jam-packed. But there are other times of year that are good to go to because we do convert all of your history out of the system and it is transactional history. It's not just, it's not summary. It's not database setups or anything like that. Every invoice, every check, all of that comes over, so you, you can go at any time of year. It's just a matter of when are you super busy and when is it easier to go through that implementation? So we work with you on that. We do a preliminary data extraction and configure it. We'll work, we'll work through that on, on our side primarily before we go live. And then we'll do a final conversion. Typically, that happens on a Thursday afternoon, Thursday morning or Thursday afternoon. You're typically down on Friday. Don't touch anything in .net on Friday. If you, if you do, when we go live on Monday, the very next Monday, we won't know what is, what is not in balance, right? So we have to shut .net off for about a day, just hold receipts, hold invoices. It's a good training aid when we do go live on the following Monday. And then training and go-live all occurs over about a two-week or so period where we train you on day-to-day activities. So, and we're, we're actually able to train in multiple groups of modules, so we can probably do GLAP and cash receipts in one session, right? Tax would be its own, assessing would be its own and things like payroll would be its own, but a lot of times we can combine them. So that's training and go-live and then there's prioritize support and assistance, so we don't immediately kick you back to our support team. You continue to work with our upgrade team during this period of time, so you're not going into the general queue where the other 12,000 support requests are going. You're still going into the queue with our upgrade team who are fielding fewer customers at a time, right? So they're there to help and they're familiar with your conversion and your implementation, so. That's, that's kind of a high-level overview of the implementation timeframe. We do break up the invoices. So a lot of times municipalities like to try and spread invoices over multiple fiscal years. It depends on how you account for that. That's something that you guys can, can kind of work out based on, you know, what you think you need to do. But first invoice is due at execution, second one is at go-live, third one is after completion of, of implementation. So sometimes you can spread that over multiple fiscal years depending on what your go-live timeline is. All told, right now, we're right at about six to nine months. If you had asked us probably a year or a year and a half ago, we would have told you the timeline was 18 months because it was so busy and we didn't have, we didn't have enough staff to handle the bandwidth. So we went out and we hired about 150 people and we've been able to bring this timeline down to about six to nine months. Our new implementations, customers that are coming from third parties to BSNA, right, not an upgrade, that was getting close to about two years, 20 months, something like that. We were able to bring that down to about 10 to 12 months with the, with the hiring that we've been able to do and the growth we've, we've been able to accomplish, so. That's about the implementation. Questions?
I actually have a question that's not necessarily specifically about upgrading, but just in general. Like we said, we just came off of using the county as our assessor, but we're still using the county assessing and tax. And if we transitioned to the cloud, we would just transition to a local cloud, tax and assessing, sound like some of the counties. Would that affect how the villages' tax works? Because I'm, I'm, they're also, I believe, on the county system, but if we stop being on the county system, how will they get the assessing data for their taxes? I mean, I'm assuming tons of villages do it, but I just.
Yeah, ton, yeah, yeah. That, I don't think there would be, I don't think there would be a tremendous change there, right? Do you manage, do you manage the villages' taxes here?
No.
Township? They do their own thing? They do their own thing, okay.
They do with the assessing, so they need the assessing data to do their taxes.
Yep, yep. So that's, yeah, that's not, that's not uncommon. It's, it's kind of similar where like, for example, if, if the county remains on .net but a local unit is on cloud or vice versa, we still have the ability to import and export data to the older platform for the alternative entity, municipal entity, so. Should be fine.
Do we ever get a copy of our data on our premise or not?
You mean like get a backup of the data like local to the township?
Yep.
So not by default. You would have to have the infrastructure in order to actually host that data locally. Some customers, what we've, what we've talked about, it, it depends on the IT infrastructure that you have here and the license. You might have licenses for Tableau or Power BI or something like that, right? If that's the case, when we release our, our API in quarter one of '26, we'll have more flexibility with being able to integrate with a platform like that where if you need to get data to a local instance for whatever reason, it would be easier to get it out that way. We also, in cloud, we've completely overhauled the export capabilities that it has where you can actually map your own exports. So if there, if there is specific data that you need to get out, that's actually available today. That can actually be scheduled as well if you wanted to pump it out every night at nine o'clock or something like that. That would be fine.
Well, I think we need to get, we should probably have a copy of a raw data onsite in case there's some technical difficulties with the blue hose going to your data centers. Also, I'm concerned with being held hostage by BSNA with our data in your cloud and if we find another solution, sometimes companies don't play nice and they don't, you know, they don't let our data out or they'll give us a, an unusable backup that we have to completely massage for the other company.
Yeah.
Just because of pettiness, but, so, that would be my concern, just being able to have a onsite backup of. But so that would be my concern, just being able to have a onsite backup of even a CFC file of all the stuff that we need that we can just upload into another system.
Yeah, so if that were to happen, let's say, you know, you go through the implementation and whatever else, five years from now or 10 years from now, you decide, hey, I'm, I'm done, right? We actually have it written into our contract that says BSNA does not own your data. We have, we don't have rights to it. All we do is, all we do is host it in our Azure environment, right? So if, if you were to go to a different provider, we provide a full SQL backup of your database. It's not just random files or CSVs or anything like that. It's a full SQL backup, which almost everybody uses SQL today. That's, we've, even dot net is a SQL based system. And if, when we've converted from third parties to dot net or to cloud and they're, they're coming from a SQL instance, very easy to conduct that conversion. It's not like how it used to be back in the day when there were, when Cobalt was out there, AS400s and custom systems. Those days are mostly behind us, thankfully. We don't really have to deal with those quite as much anymore. So when it's SQL to SQL, very easy to run those conversions.
Okay.
So we also, yeah, so at, upon request, if you, if you needed that, that backup, we would provide it. We do not charge for it.
Okay. And then this is, this is being prompted by our assessing contract with the other people? They want us on this or is this a, this is software upgrade?
To upgrade to, for better workflow and, and, yeah.
And like you said, they're, they're not doing even new to the dot net.
Right. It's old, it's 16 years old, so we'd like to get into this century. And then it's on the other side, too. It's really easy for people to pay. And then they, they, they can go in and see their permits and all. There's all sorts of really cool features to it on the, on the user end as well, or the, the other, the customer side.
Yeah, right now, it's very limited what they can see online.
Right.
That was gonna be a question of mine, if this was just a like township and a working tool or if it would for the residents.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
On both.
Okay.
Yeah, and right now, because our, our tax and assess, pretty much just tax and assessing are the only things we have on our website. And we have to import them from the county system to a, like a local version so that it can even go on the website. So we do that, and so we only do it like once a week because it's a bracket. We do it constantly so that it's not fully up to date all the time. It's only up to date once a week.
And then this, it helps the inspectors, too, because they can do all of their stuff right at the, the site through the cloud, right on their laptop or their tablet. It all gets done, which helps the builders know when things are done. It's, it's, has really good features for efficiency all the way around.
What's our annual cost right now for dot net?
I did look at that. So it is quite a bit more. So the annual cost in the proposal is about 33,000 and the annual cost we're paying right now is about 12. So it's about 20, 21,000.
Now, for the budget that we've looked at and projections as we've looked at, like the new township office and stuff, have you accounted for an upgrade to these services in your projections and things like that?
I don't know if this specifically was in there, but I mean, we tend to put a decent cushion on IT in general.
Yeah, because we did anticipate we were going to do something, but I don't remember specifically.
Sure. But just it was on our mind as we were building that out and coming front of us and saying, what we're, you know, anticipated to spend over these next five years, that that's more than.
Oh, yeah. Oh, definitely.
Okay. And then, I mean, I would imagine we would want to review the contract prior to final approval.
Yes.
This board.
Yep, we would not want the attorney to look at it and then it would come back to us.
How long do the contracts typically work? Like this annual fee of 33,000, how long is that locked in?
It's, it's an assumed annual renewal. So for as long as you want to be on it, we don't lock you into five year agreements or anything like that, so.
But every year, like you're not going to raise it 10%, just because you can?
Nope, it's cat, well, so the, the way that it's written in the contract is that it is the, it is either CPI or 5%. So typically CPI floats like around 3%, except for, you know, a few years ago, it got really crazy. But typically, it floats right around 3%. And so normally, we're only 2% above that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us down to reports. We start with our trustees, Mr. McCanney. Anything to report?
The planning commission meeting went fine. We have, we approved the new expansion for crane, heating and cooling. Looks like it'll be a nice addition to that corner. Also, do, they'll be, gonna be doing some plantings to bring up their, their plot to code. And it looks like it's going to be a good, a good addition, sort of start shaping the urban or rural town center feel for that, for that whole district. So it's a, it's like one of the first ones visible, so that was, that was good.
That's awesome. We went to the cemetery right there on Grange Hall, my wife and I, and we were just looking around. It looks like they've started on the senior living community, Trinity Hill.
Oh, yeah, I heard the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The trees are gone. Didn't see it, you wouldn't believe it. I just look out and I'm like, oh, my gosh, this is like gone.
Now, they'll be planting trees, so they have their tree survey and all, all those plans have been approved as well. So they'll be putting trees back, but they had to balance the land. There was no way to save them.
Yeah, I recall that as part, yeah, I just, you know, it, it can be said, but it's still a little dry.
Yeah, it's shocking.
Anything else, sir?
That's it?
Okay. Mr. Kinnaman?
On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we have a car show coming up, unlike the one out front. We have our own that we host on the Dixie Byway at Mount Holly. It is on Saturday, October 11th. If you have a vehicle that you would like to bring, you can meet at Waypoint Church between 8:30 and 9:30 in the morning. The youth group there provides coffee and donuts. And 9:30, they all pull out and drive the eight and a half miles up to Mount Holly for the event. Last year, we had over 200 vehicles in that drive and about 270 at the event. And so we're looking for something comparable. Public can come and sit outside, you know, along the road and watch the parade, basically, and then come and look at all the vehicles up close, food trucks and other things going on, live band. So it's a good day.
Awesome. Yeah. Cool, then.
And when you mentioned the cemetery, I have a question then on the cemetery. I had someone reach out to me asking about some cleanup around the revolutionary era gravestones. They said there was a lot of brush there and stuff. And as we're moving into the 250th anniversary, they are looking, nationally, they're looking at doing some things in relation to revolutionary era plots and things. So it might be nice to be sure that's up on our list of cleanups.
We'll take care of it.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Anything else?
That should be good.
Mr. Burton?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just curious, in terms of statutory revenue sharing, if we have heard anything updates on that? Because I know it's going through legislature to eliminate the statutory revenue sharing.
It was, I mean, it's the, so it's basically taking back what they just gave us. So as a township, we didn't get any statutory, we only got the constitutional.
Okay.
And it's not a ton of money.
Right.
But I'm sure it's a ton overall, but for us in particular, it's not going to have a big effect on our budget. But we just got it back for the first time in very long time and now they're want to pull it right back away.
Yeah, okay. But the constitutional, I mean, is protected, so they're protected, right?
Right, yes, yeah.
Yep, that's all I have.
Myself, I have nothing to add. Ms. Ryan?
Yes, so I went to my first HIA meeting, so I just have some events that they have coming up. They have some family education events on September 29th and October 20th, and they'll be doing their mental health fair in November. They'll be at the Halloween Car Show, which is October 1st. And then for November and December, if you shop at Goodwill, they're going to be the roundup charity. So if you round up, it goes to HIA.
Awesome, very cool.
Yeah.
Last but certainly not least, Ms. Winchester?
I have no report.
Okay, all right. So that brings us down to our first of two public comments. This public comment is on agenda items only. Members of the public can address the board on agenda items once recognized by the chair. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business or all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Anyone for public comment? All right. None, seeing none. All right, so that brings us down to old business, none, new business, the BSNA cloud proposal. Any further discussion on this item? As far as making a motion, I think if we did, would, would it be like just contingent upon contract?
Approval.
Approval? And then including the bid amount? Or could that be wait, could that wait until we review the contract and the amounts from the contract and everything? Or just include both in the motion tonight?
Oh, I, I don't know if it really matters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, they made it sound almost like the price is going to fluctuate based on whatever they find. Is what I understood. That price is going to fluctuate is what he made.
That's just like the annual price.
But it sounded like prior to him stating that, like earlier in that conversation, he had mentioned he had to look at some things or something, it sounded like. And then once the contract was done, he would come up with more solid numbers.
Okay, so then maybe we do.
Well, it was a proposal.
Move to approve the proposal, right?
But it's not really any, are we, that's not actionable, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
It is, that's what starts the process.
Oh. Well, did it RF, did we RFP it and?
That's who we want, we don't want.
We don't want?
Yeah, nobody else really does the assessing and tax, then you'd have to have.
Ooh, sounds like a good.
They've kind of monopolized the market.
Yeah, we really have.
Yeah, so when you say that if we were going to leave, we'll probably never leave.
No?
Well, and I don't know that there's a lot of, I remember doing this at another city where we were looking at different options. And there are some other ones, but it's, it's not a lot of different options for the government ones. Or there's like the crazy expensive options, like an Oracle system or something.
Yes.
So I think more and more municipalities are going to BSNA, just like.
They are.
Communities and everything. And as I've moved in my time and everything, I was surprised, they're like, oh, they use BSNA, too, you know, right to do everything, so. So, yeah, but that's a great question. I do, yeah.
I'll be honest, it was a bit of a sticker shock, but I also feel like there's not, I mean, we can postpone it, but it's, we're going to have to do it eventually. Eventually, dot net's not going to be viable.
It's just the cost of doing business.
It is. And, and we don't want to lag behind, you know, we, we just don't.
And it'd be nice to have an actual like online presence that was helpful. Because right now, I feel like our, our online is very limited. And they all just end up calling us anyway.
Yeah, so we're working harder.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing is, is to have, I mean, people blow it off and it doesn't seem to be a big deal, but your core data, you need a backup of it onsite.
Yep.
Because it's just a blue hose out to their data centers. And if you lose the connection, you lose your database. So the database is precious. It doesn't have to be all the receipts, but it needs to be all your addresses, all the properties, all, you know, all that data is not moving, right? It's stable. So that's the stuff you need down on a hard drive, you needed a, or some type of storage thing.
Right, on our, I'm sure that we could get it to.
Burned onto.
To our server through the FTP.
Even being on a server is, is at risk because it's live, right? You just need a hard.
Well, then that goes to our IT backup.
That might work, yeah, as long as it's somewhere here.
So it goes offsite at night.
Because if you have to recover, it just, it's a disaster recovery point, right? It's data back, backup, you need two different medias, you need three different sites. It's, it's just a good practice. And also the fact that they could hold you hostage.
Right.
And it's, everybody thinks everybody's okay, but the problem is, is these guys are getting big. And when they get sold to an Oracle or an IBM, you're not dealing with the same guys that created it. And now you're dealing with other, a whole different aspect of political whatever. And then they have you because you don't have your data and you can't rebuild. So it is important and I would hopefully.
So what sort of infrastructure would we need here if we were to do something like?
The infrastructure is kind of a buzzword. It's just, you, you need like a CD player. You know, the, the infrastructure would be a server and then being able to put it on the server, take it off the server. And also the SQL is another, that's just a query language for a database. And you're querying the database to get down the data with SQL. There is a SQL database that's being used also. But, you know, in the end, data is data. It's basically a spreadsheet or a comma separated file of data. And databases eat that stuff. So if in, in a disaster recovery situ- situation, you need the data in some format that a software engineer can go, oh, all right, field one is address, field three is, you know, state, city, zip code. And then you can create a little piece of software that brings it into the database. And that, if you don't have that, it's hours and hours of typing, which is not fun.
No.
I've done it, it's bad, it's really bad. So if they're offering a, a simple download from their software, then we need to do it. You just need to take it.
Yeah.
And do the critical infrastructure stuff once and then maybe do your receipts once a month. Because that just helps you with your stress. If, if something happens, you have at least a month's of, you know, up to last month's receipts down. And if they can do it automatically, then just do that. Storage is cheap.
Yeah.
Hard drives are cheap, servers are cheap. So it's, it's always good just to have a physical backup because, you know, just craziness.
And this will free up room on our server because it'll be in the cloud.[1639.33] So all the local stuff we have, we won't need.
Yeah.
So we'll have plenty of space.
Yeah, so that would be my suggestion. But other than that, it's just the cost of doing business.
Yep, I agree.
Anything to add? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to move forward in the BSNA cloud proposal process contingent upon reviewing of contract at a later meeting. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we got motion by Mattson, support by Kinnaman. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Jennifer Ryan?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Michael McCanny?
Yes.
Ryan Mattson?
Yes.
Richard Kinnaman?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, new business, item two, we have our municipal credit and community inter-local agreement with SMART.
This used to be an annual thing that we'd have to do every year. And mostly because there was more than one vendor. And there's no longer more than one vendor, so. So we're gonna go with WODA, which is what we're doing right now. And this has been reviewed by the attorney, so we're all set to go.
Okay. Any discussion?
So it's transferring the SMART money we get to.
WODA.
WODA.
Yeah, which we've done, that's what we did previously.
Yes, and it's usually annually, so this'll just stop that from having to come to us every year.
Okay, awesome.
I would move to approve the municipal credit and community inter-local agreement with SMART.
Support. So we have motion by Winchester, support by Mattson. Any further discussion? Maybe a roll call vote.
Karen Winchester, yes. Jennifer Ryan?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Michael McCanny?
Yes.
Richard Kinnaman?
Yes.
Ryan Mattson?
Yes.
All right, and then new business, item three, Holly Area Youth Assistance Contract.
This is our annual contract that we have with the Holly Area Youth Assistance.
Any major changes or anything from last year's?
Yes, there is. Thank you for that. We did increase with our, in our budget, too, to, from $2,600 a year to $3,500 a year. So that's the change.
Awesome. Well, that sounds like a good change.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Holly Area Youth Assistance Contract.
Support.
All right, we have motion by Burton, support by Winchester. Any further discussion? May we have a roll call vote?
Richard Kinnaman?
Yes.
Michael McCanny?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Jennifer Ryan?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Ryan Mattson?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to our last public comment of the evening. Same rules as earlier. Members of the public can address the board once recognized by the chair. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members shall, excuse me, prior to addressing board members, the public shall state their name and address for the record. Anyone for the final public comment of tonight's meeting? All right, so I will.
Real quick, could I make a member comment, because I want to ask this afterwards? When will we be hearing back from the attorney on all the questions that we provided?
It'll be the October meeting. She has it ready, but she wanted a full board.
Great question. Any other last final thoughts? All right, I will move to adjourn the meeting at 7:19 PM.
Support.
Don't.